Good evening, everyone. This is once again the Muni Poly Matters podcast. I'm very pleased to be back and to bring you a spotlight on another candidate who's running in the 2022 Ontario municipal election. I'm very pleased to introduce Mr. Rich Lau. He is a candidate running in the city of Markham. He is running in Ward Two in Markham. And Rich, very nice to meet you. How are you tonight?
Very nice. Thank you so much, Alan, for doing this, you know. I think what you're doing is very important because throughout my past month since I registered as a candidate, I find out that a lot of our residents, you know, they know about the federal election. They know about the Ontario election that just happened in June. But over time, I find they are overlooking our municipal election. Some of us, some of them don't even know about them.
Yeah, it's very interesting. It's almost ironic because the municipal level of government seems to be the one most directly impacting our lives on a daily basis. And yet it's the election where there's a lower, lower fold of turnout. We thought that the provincial election might have a lower turnout this time, but municipal election is usually even lower.
Yes, what you're saying is totally correct, you know. For the past two federal election, the voting ratio is about, you know, around seventy, above seventy. So that's very good. For Ontario election for the past two times, I realized that it's about, you know, forty something, close to fifty percent, right? But for municipal election, especially in my ward, Ward Two, where I'm living, the voting turnout is so low. It's, it's, I'm very sad to say that it's only twenty-two percent for the last election for my ward. Out of ten people, only two people went out and vote. So that's something that we need to pay attention to.
Yeah, let me just do something for one quick second because I want to, because there is a video portion of this later. I want to show people where Ward Two in Markham actually is. So.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, so this is a map of the city of Markham's eight wards.
Yeah.
And Ward Two is here. It's bordered by Highway four oh four. And then Highway seven on the south and then Warden Avenue on the east and then all the way to the north boundary of the city limits. So I guess, I guess the most prominent local areas in the ward, Buttonville Airport is in the ward. Um, oh, Markham Civic Centre. So City Hall is right in your.
City Hall is right there?
Yeah. And then there's also neighborhoods like Cashett and I think Buttonville is in there. And then there's also Cathedral Town.
This is Cathedral Town where I live, yeah?
Oh, yes. Yes. For those of you watching on video, which this background is Cathedral Town. Uh, so how long have you lived in Cathedral Town in the ward? Have you always lived there?
Uh, no, uh, me and my wife, we bought our first house in Markham, near McCowan and Major Mackenzie. And then we moved here to Woodbine and Major Mackenzie because we feel like this neighborhood is, no. My daughter is one year old and we plan to live here for the next forty years, fifty years. So I want to find the perfect neighborhood for me and I find a lot of potential in Ward Two. And so far, my neighbors are really good, really nice. So I love this neighborhood.
Okay, so, uh, so this is your first time running, right? Uh, this is the first time you've put yourself forward as a candidate for public office. Yes, okay.
Yes, I have, you know, been a reporter, a news anchor for the past fifteen, sixteen years. So I'm very familiar with, you know, three levels of government and I have a lot of, you know, friends and, you know, in the federal government, provincial government, you know, some of them became politicians, some of them already retired. And some of them are city councillors and I've met the mayor many times. And that's why I think as a media person, someone who do the news, I have a advantage of, you know, being familiar with, you know, what the three level governments do. Sometimes I have to explain to my residents, you know, what's the difference between the three levels of government? Some of them do not, you know, clearly know the differences and what the responsibility are.
So had you always just wanted to be in the media business or the news industry? I just wonder how you decided, of all the things you wanted to do, that you wanted to be a news reporter?
Right. Okay, so let's, let's do a little introduction of myself, you know.
Sure.
I came from Hong Kong. I came to Canada when I was fourteen. I studied high school here in St Andrews College in Aurora. And then I went to U of T Scarborough and studied mental health science. I graduated with a degree. And then my first job is in the media field, you know. I started working in the Chinese radio station as a radio host, you know, talking about traffic, weather, music, sports and the news. And there was, there was an opportunity for me in my mid twenties that I was able to become, you know, a news reporter. And then for the past ten years, I have been, you know, the news anchor of a national broadcast Chinese television. So a lot of, you know, Chinese families will maybe recognize my face. Some of them do. When I was canvassing, they would be like, oh, I saw you on TV before. What are you doing here? And it's like, I quit my job. And they're like, what? And I tell them, yes, I'm so dedicated. I actually quit my job on TV and to become your sixth city councillor. Yeah, that's my story.
That's a, that's a very amazing story. Yes. Yeah, I would imagine that some people might recognize you when you come to the door because you've been on their TVs for the last ten, fifteen years, right? So let's, I guess, let's look into some of your platform ideas because I went to your website and I've seen, I watched some of the videos that you put out. You had a, I guess you had a campaign launch of some kind.
Yes, that was in May. That was a few days right after I registered. I was actually the first candidate to use.
Yeah, I'm curious. Why did you think it was important to like make a point of that? Because let's me just put out something there to you. Like, there's a lot of people who are the first person to register. They can say that obviously, but it's not like they always, all of them are going to end up winning. I've had friends who run for office for, no offence, right? I've had friends who run before. They've said, they've, they've registered the first day, but they end up not winning. So there's always just that thing to consider, like, I don't know. Why did you think it was important to emphasize that you were like the first candidate in Ward Two to register?
Yeah, very good question. I can answer that. So first of all, fun fact, this year is the first year the city of Markham is doing the electronic registration for candidates. Before, we always have to go to the city hall, the civic centre, and we have to, you know, assign and you'll have a meeting with the city staff, the election clerk. But this year, because of COVID, they changed everything. Every single candidate, including, you know, the mayor later on, they have to do it online. So I decided that I should, you know, test the system out. I, nine AM that morning, May second, I was told that I was the first one that completed the process. It was about an hour. It wasn't difficult at all. And the reason why I decided to, you know, run, to register and emphasize that I was the first candidate to do it in whole Markham is because I want to show that I'm not an opportunist. There will be people that, you know, in the municipal election where they will, you know, look around and see which ward am I gonna have a chance to win, you know, they might not even live in that ward, but they feel like, oh, the incumbents have just left. So there's a spot for me and let's calculate the chance of winning and then decide to run or not. So the statement I'm trying to point out is that I'm not like that, like I'm gonna run anyway. I'm not gonna care if the incumbent for Ward Two is gonna run again or not, which the case is that he decided to, you know, run for regional councillor. So it just happened that Ward Two is now, you know, lack of incumbent. And I believe at this moment, including me, there are already four candidates that just registered already.
Yes, for those of you who don't know, Ward Two is currently represented by councillor Alan Ho. Alan Ho has decided to run for regional councillor in Markham. So he'll be running citywide. So Ward Two has become an open ward. So that's why Rich and some of the others have been putting their names forward, I think. I mean, but even still, like if councillor Ho was running, would you have jumped in the race as well? So also, if, like given that you're coming, we're still running.
Yes, I, I did not know that he would be running for regional, but if he would put his name, I believe he's registered like on the same day as me.
Okay.
Or the day after. So very close timing. So if I realize that he have already registered, then I could, I would still be running. I think it is, it is a good step for me to, you know, I've been in the same company doing news for the past fifteen, sixteen years. And, you know, I'm thirty-six years old. Sometimes when I go to canvassing, you know, some, some, some people would ask me, hey, you're twenty years old. What are you running for city councillor? And I'm like, I have a child. I'm thirty-six years old, but thank you. Maybe it's the genes or something like that. I look very young. I do have gray hair. So I tell them, I'm thirty-six and my daughter is one and I plan to grow my family here in Ward Two. And I really want the best and I'm really on the resident side, you know, sometimes. One of the reasons that I'm running for city councillor is that when I'm canvassing for the past month, a lot of times I find out the perception of politicians have, have not been very, you know, positive. Some residents have been, you know, telling me their feedback is that, oh, you know, councillors or, you know, MP, MPPs. I don't want to point out any names, but it's a general feeling that people think that politicians only show up every four years and they only show up to fundraising dinners, gala dinners, photo op opportunities. And they're not really in the neighborhood to listen to people's concern. And that's why I, when I knock on doors, I'm not, I wasn't doing this speed run thing. I'm not going like, hi, I'm here to, you know, get your vote and buy it. I spend so much time with every single resident that I get a chance to talk to. Some of them don't want to talk to me. That's okay. But some of them, today, I just spent an hour talking to one single resident. And he was telling me about his neighbours. Because I live in Cathedral Town. There are certain neighborhoods that I'm not a hundred percent familiar with. I'm gonna be honest. I'm not perfect. But I'm willing to listen and I'm willing to learn and I'm willing to take responsibility and hope to change the perception of, you know, I hope to become a newer, a younger generation of politicians that people can relate to, who, I'm a working dad, you know, I'm not from business family. I don't have, you know, big company, big corporations to support me, developers. I don't have that. I'm a working dad. I just care about my, my, my children's future and my future. So there's something in my platform that focus on that exactly is what we need as residents.
Okay, you know what? Let's take a look at your platform because I have it up on my screen as well here.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very, I found it very interesting because you says, you put forward that your plan is, is a bright plan. So it's an acronym. So let's just go through each one of the points that you put here. And so the first thing you said here is budget. And your first, your point about the budget is you want to monitor the use of the city budget to ensure our city of Markham operates with a lean financial plan and to dissect and present up-to-date budget plans on a regular basis to ensure all relevant municipal fiscal information is disclosed to you in a timely and transparent manner and to provide you, the residents, with the latest incentive or benefit plans and tips and helping you save your money. Is there, just based on my point alone, now, my understanding is cities in Ontario, they're not allowed to run a deficit. So they have to present a balanced budget every fiscal year. This has been maybe somewhat thrown off by the last two years of COVID nineteen spending. But nevertheless, that is on the law, by law, that cities have to balance their books. My understanding is that Markham has, like many other GTA municipalities, you know, adhere to the principles of running fiscally responsible most of the time.
Yes.
You know, there's not a lot of, I don't hear a lot of stories about wild spending from Mayor Scarpity or Simakan City Council. So, you know, why don't you, do you want to address this point? Is there something, is there something you find that it could be improved on? Or is there like some, some, something you don't agree with with the way the city is managing money right now?
So I don't want to exaggerate anything because, you know, keeping a tight budget, not increasing property tax by a lot is base. It's, it's basic. It's very common sense, right? Everybody who lives here would prefer that. But it's not that. It's, it's not looking very good this year because, as you know, you know, Markham's property tax, property tax have been frozen, you know. But this year, we had to increase that by a bit because what's happening, we all know, is that the inflation is going really high. Gas prices, food prices, everything is costing a lot more. So it's, it's not looking as good as before, meaning that, you know, Markham for all these years have been substituting, increasing the property tax by, you know, building more houses, you know, getting more taxpayers. Instead of making each taxpayer to pay more, that was the strategy for the past, I don't know how many years, but many years for Markham. And a lot of residents here appreciate the fact that we're not getting a lot of property tax increase. But as I said, you know, because of the global crisis, budget is gonna be tough. And in fact, you know, our, as candidates to run in a city council, we used to have more city rebates for our donation contributors. But this year, they had to cut that and there's many more cuts already happened. So one of the things that I would say is that, you know, keeping a good budget is something, it's so basic, it's common sense. So I don't want to spend too much time on this, but it's, yeah, it's just what we have to do. So our property tax won't increase by too much.
Yeah, and I think depending on just property tax, it's always, that's the primary source of revenue for most municipal governments in Ontario. Like, I mean, like there have been, I've read of things that of people talk about, well, cities need to have like alternative sources of revenue. Because we, we, people expect them to provide services, right? And if they only have one source of money to draw from, that's gonna be, that makes it very hard year after year. No matter whether it's a good economic period or a bad economic period. So, you know, I, I, like, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but do you think it's a, it would be something to talk about? To like introduce like alternate sources of revenue or ask like another level of government for permission to like raise fees in certain other areas or to draw money other from other than property taxes?
Uh, yes, definitely. I will look into that. Yeah, but I really want to talk about the, the second part of my.
Okay, okay.
Because that is the thing that a lot of residents have been telling me about. So the second part, as you can see, is a recreational space.
Yes, I saw your video. You said that Ward Two does not have their own community centre, right?
For all these years.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's, it's a relatively new area, but it's, the area's been around for a bit. So it's very interesting that, I guess, residents in your ward have to drive to a place, I guess, out to Angus Glen, which is pass Warden into somewhere else in order to.
Or six, yeah.
Or six. And you mentioned that there's a like, like a backlog and of like awaiting, like people have to like book their spots and wait for a very long period of time before they can actually access those services. So as a city councillor, how would you go about in getting a community centre in your ward, you know?
Well, first of all, the community space is definitely lacking in my ward because it's kind of tied to what we were talking earlier about, you know, budget and property tax and building more houses. You know, Markham has been very vibrant in, you know, in terms of, you know, building more housing and, you know, townhouses, condos. But at the same time, you know, what I've been hearing is that the city haven't show that they have a plan that not only tackling the shortage of housing, but at the same time having adequate accommodation for people who actually live there. So too many houses, but not enough, community centre, parks, libraries, schools and stores. People are trying to find, you know, stores near their houses and they're like, oh, it's just more houses nearby. I always have to drive, you know, five, ten minutes to get to where a supermarket is. So that's, that's not working for a lot of neighborhoods. So back to the question is that for community centre, what's happening right now is that the whole Markham is trying to get into Angus Glen, Thornhill, you know, some Markham residents in Ward, Ward Two because Ward Two is right next to Richmond Hill. Some of our neighbors, they actually have to go to, they decided to go to Richmond Green Community Centre in Richmond Hill. So that's something that we should do better. And if we have the space, if we have the land to do it, then we need to really fight for our own community centre because after COVID, a lot of people want to come out to have, you know, community activities, you know, especially seniors. Not just me just want to play basketball, not just my kids when they're getting the swimming lessons. Also seniors are having so much demand for booking a space, a place outdoor, indoor. You know, do some dancing, play some sports, singing, things that make them happy, have quality life. But they couldn't do that right now because they're telling me that when they try to book, it's all full, especially in Angus Glen. So what I'm suggesting is that we need to, you know, not only build the houses. You know, we can't stop building houses. We need to build houses. That's, that's just common sense, right? For the population growth. But because of the population growth, we need to have enough facilities to make sure that people live there, can have, you know, spaces to keep them happy. You know, I have a degree in mental health science. People who are lack of physical activities tend to have, you know, not as good mood as usual, sometimes even depression, you know, mental stress. You know, that's where the negative energy comes from. That's why I am going to fight. I'm gonna try my very best to build, to try to get a community centre in Ward Two finally, after all these years.
Okay, excellent. Yeah. So, yeah, you're, let's take a look at some of your, the next promise you made, you wanted to work on. That's your I, increase employment opportunities and you want to organize events, competitions and workshops to help, you know, enhance the knowledge and build up career profiles of people in your community. And I believe in your background, you, you have some experience in sort of organizing community events. Yeah, yeah, definitely, right? I think during the pandemic, you organized some, you know, distribution of a personal protective equipment and.
Yes.
And as well.
Rapid test kits, yeah.
Yeah. So how would you go about as a councillor to help increase, you know, jobs in Ward Two?
So the last, I talked about the community events, the, the last event that I've done before I, you know, become a candidate was a youth speech contest. And the theme of the contest was my ideal, my dream city. And I got a lot of amazing feedback from our children, our next generation, what they want to see in our city. So one person in my team, my campaign team, my very good friend for many years, he is a lecturer, a researcher from, you know, Toronto Metropolitan University, which is, used to be called Ryerson University. And he gave me so much good ideas, you know, I'm not a scholar myself. But this, this friend of mine, his name is Cliff, and because he has always been working with, you know, young people, he gave me this idea that with more community activities, like a speech contest, you know, and for, you know, people in high school and even, you know, in university, you know, we can have some community events to help them, to guide them, you know, writing a resume, you know, finding a job, how to do public speech, how to do better in an interview. Because, you know, I used to be very shy as a teenager. And before I became a TV news anchor, I, I was very nervous, anxious in public speaking. And I feel like especially after three years of lockdown, our, our kids, our teens, they need more opportunities to train their, her public speaking skills, skills that will, you know, let them have a better chance in finding a job, you know, being a volunteer, getting more involved in the community. Instead of, I don't want to say that because I play video game myself. But, but it's true that sometimes in, you know, the COVID times, we're just stuck at home. We've got nothing to do. So sometimes kids will, you know, play video games at home and not doing much outside and socially, you know, physically outside. So that's what I'm trying to do is, is that as a city councillor, we have that influence. And I have been, you know, before I am a candidate, I'm already organizing these kind of events to encourage young people to come out. So that's my plan. And when I become a city councillor, I will, I will organize more, more bigger scale events to help these children, you know, teenagers, young adults to get into the society, our community, help them succeed in the future.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So the next one is G, it says green community. And you want to say you want to discuss the opportunity to increase bike rack supply in the ward and also build more charging stations for electrical vehicles in the community. So, yeah, I think electric vehicles are becoming more of a trend lately, like, I think maybe.
When the gas price is two dollars? We, everybody wished they had bought an EV like a few years ago now, right?
Yeah, I'm just curious because, you know, I was wondering if Markham like has, you know, some kind of plan to put more electric vehicle infrastructure. I know like in certain like private buildings and condos, they have those installed in the underground, in the chargers. But underground because a lot of people are buying those vehicles now. So I don't know. As a city councillor, how do you go about in promoting that idea and not just in your ward, but maybe across the city as well, you know?
Yes. So, yeah, let's go back to, you know, I, I'm a media person, you know, there's things that I'm not professional in. That's why I want to give a shout out to, you know, really my, my, my friend, the lecturer from Ryerson University, Cliff Chan. Now, he gave me this idea because he has been developing, you know, electronic powered scooter for years. And he's, he's telling me, like, he's, he's, he ride the bike, he rides scooter. And he's very concerned about, you know, our environment. And I really take advice from him. As we were talking about, EV is inevitable. Like, we have a plan federally that in time, all the new cars will be zero emissions. So it's, it's definitely something we have to prepare. But right now, what I'm seeing, what, you know, my friend Cliff is seeing is that we do not have enough chargers, we don't have enough, you know, the bike lanes, things that support that green community idea and plan. So we'll have to keep this in mind that it's inevitable. And we have to make sure that, especially the gas price is so high, that in time, most people would, you know, get into electrical vehicles, electrical bikes and scooters. So it gradually will, will able to, you know, hit that goal of zero emissions, you know, sometime in the future. That's, that's, that's a must. We can't, we can't deny that.
I know the next one is about harmonized community. I want to go back to that. But because you already brought up the idea of EVs and scooters lately, I think I want to jump to your last point, which is traffic and public transit, because I think those two are related.
Right.
Yeah.
Quickly, I just want to say, you know, the harmonized community, I apologize, it's, I have to use H for the acronym.
Oh, okay.
It's basically for safety. It just means that for safety. I've been talking to a lot of neighbors. My street got a car stolen just four months ago. So that's what we're concerned about, making sure the community is safe, growing our neighborhood watch groups. And, yeah, encourage people to install those smart cameras to make sure our homes don't get broken.
Yeah, I have noticed that because like, I, I'm, look, I'll admit it right now. I volunteered for election candidates just this past month and I've been door knocking with them too. I don't get into more extensive conversation like you do. You probably do it better than I do. But, but I have seen a lot of people use these, use, use these smart monitoring and like their doorbells are equipped with cameras so they can see who is ringing the doorbell. I also use this app called Nextdoor, which, which is how I connected with you.
How you found me?
How I found you.
Because my email wasn't working for a week.
But anyway, yeah, I, I noticed on Nextdoor, there's always residents from around Markham posting videos. It's just like, oh, the vandalism or someone's trying to steal a car, this or someone's doing this or that. And it just seems like there's just a lot of these sort of incidents is happening late at night or when they think nobody's watching. Just not just in your ward, but it's just around the community. So, you know, I'm just, you know, I don't know like what people, what the city council would be able to do in conjunction with the police because we always expect something to come from the police in terms of like just trying to keep the community safe. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a very pressing issue, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's very important, especially for my ward, because if you look at the map, Ward Two is right next to four oh four highway.
Yeah.
And that's why the bad guys, they think that it's easy to, you know, come grab a car and go quickly. It's, it's, it's a lot more easier. And I've been encouraging residents to, you know, install. If they have to park on the driveway, you know, the, the police encourage us to install those old school mechanical tire locks on our steel, stealing wheel. And that is gonna be a, you know, very good deterrent.
Okay, well, yeah, that's a, it's very a good set of ideas you have put forward. And I guess like one of my last questions before I, well, I said, I have two more questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, so for municipal government, you have to work with like other orders of government, like province and federal government. So you've obviously have described like your own connections from before with various people from other levels of government. So as a city councillor, like you're only at, at the city, not at the region. But besides that point, like how, how would you go about in leveraging your relationships in order to build better relations with other levels of government? To maybe get some of the things that you've put forward in your platform done?
So, yeah, some of my viewers, they have watched me interview Justin Trudeau. Some of them have watched me interview Aaron O'Toole, the last Conservative leader. And I have interviewed Doug Ford. I've interviewed, you know, various politicians. But one of the questions that I get when I go canvass is that residents ask me, hey, Rich, so what party are you in? And I have to tell them very clearly. And I have to tell them uh very clearly that I'm in independent, especially we're running for city councillor. And it's so important for city councillor to be nonpartisan and to not have too strong of a tie with. A certain party. The reason why is that um you, right now, we have a liberal uh government for federal level. And we have a PC, a conservative government for a provincial, right? But the thing is, you know, as city councillor, for city, you you never hear people say that. The liberal government of Markham or the conservative government of Toronto, it it's, doesn't make sense. It might make sense in Vancouver or in, you know, BC, because right, in that province, their rules are, is, is that. City councillors can have a party, but in Ontario, we cannot. So I would say that. As a city councillor, uh oftentimes I, as, as I was canvassing, I'm explaining to residents that, you know. Our role is to make sure what's best for our city, for us, for the residents. If uh the federal government, the the liberal government have some, you know, they have um. Money for us to, you know, fix the bridges, you know, build things and uh good, good infrastructure to help our city, sure, yeah, we can cooperate with them. If the provincial government, you know, they just got reelected, they're building a new highway, is that something that residents want? We have to talk to our residents. So it depends really on what's best for Markham residents. So I would say that, you know, there'll be more candidates for different wards throughout Markham, Richmond Hill, York region. And I would, I don't wanna warn people, but I would suggest, first of all, vote for a councillor that actually live in your ward. And second of all, um if a candidate really high profile and they're trying to emphasize their, they're really friend. Really closely tied with a certain party, you know, liberal, conservative, NDP, doesn't matter, you know, gotta be, you know, be, be careful. If that candidate become your councillor, is he gonna put the party's priorities first or is he gonna put the city's priority first? That's a very good question to ask.
Yeah, I think it's important, because I think um you probably encounter, you you just mentioned in your canvassing that you've, there's some people ask you which party you're from. And they, because they, they're so used to like political parties in, during an election campaign, it's uh, it's very confusing to sort of blends over. Well, um I think I want, I wanna thank you for, for your time, Rich, and uh, you know, I know you're very busy out there, meeting people every day. So I really appreciate your time and coming on here. Um just one, I've, one more thing, I think I noticed. Uh right. Should you be successful, I believe you would be the second um fair uh uh news anchor to sit on Markham City Council. Cause I think uh your former colleague, Isa Lee, is uh the Ward eight councillor right now, I believe.
Yeah, before she was elected, we were co-anchors on TV, so uh I've much to learn. Uh also Castro Liu from Richmond Hill.
Ah, yes, yes.
Who is also a fairchild, you know, um, you know, DJ, like a radio host, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah. I've seen him, I've seen him uh at a number of functions before too, so, okay. Well, uh yeah, well, Rich, thank you very much again for your.
Thank you so much.
And uh if people want to find you uh, to find you, find you, locate you or contact you.
Yes.
How do they reach you? Do you want to promote your uh, your website or your, your social media?
Yeah, it's very easy. My uh website is just richlau.ca, my name, and then there is email, there's phone number on it. And you're welcome to send me any feedbacks, especially, you know, if you want me to learn about your community, your neighborhood more. Then I would definitely happy to come over to meet you and talk to you. And Alan, I wanna say you're doing fantastic, you know, fantastic, because we are really, you know, doing some, something that uh. Really boosted voter turnout, I hope, in the October. Hopefully not twenty two percent anymore, thirty, forty percent.
Yeah, let's hope it's, let's hope it's higher than thirty percent, you know, whatever it is, that's really low. But I thank you again for your time. And uh this is uh once again, um Uni Poly Matters podcast and please, in Ontario, remember to vote on October twenty fourth. Thank you very much.